Okay, good evening. I'll call to order the committee of the whole for Tuesday, September 12th, two thousand twenty-three. Let the record show that all aldermen are present with the exception of Alden Panis, who is excused. First on our agenda, we have, we have a discussion for funding vehicle purchases, eight dump trucks, and five Ford edges. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, let's see. Have you all recall that back a while ago, we were authorized by you to put the border in for these? And at that time, we were told it would be eighteen to twenty-four months before we would get these. Well, just while they're in. So we have them now. So Robert, do you want to talk somewhere on this?
Sure. So, good evening. So we right now have, out of this order, we have five of the eight trucks right here. There's still three front house canning. We have all the edges in. Looks like things are picking up in the supply chain. Things are moving quicker. Future orders may not be so quick. We're talking about possible strikeout in the auto industry, so that can slow us down for parts in new orders. But for right now, it looks like they're moving. Those eight trucks total four forty-nine, three thirty-four, sixty-nine cents. And the edges were one eighty-five, one ten. So we have the edges. We have most of the trucks. The other three will be in soon shortly.
So now we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Alderman?
Those were two separate purchases, correct?
Yes.
Right. The five Ford edges that were verbally authorized in May were for a purchase price on state contract for twenty-three thousand dollars per vehicle.
No, they were thirty-seven thousand.
On May sixteenth, Brad Camp explained that he was seeking approval to purchase five Ford edges with a cost of twenty-three thousand dollars each. He explained the window for order is coming up soon.
Obviously, it's obviously going up. I wasn't here for that, so I can't help for that. But they were thirty-seven thousand, but they were no swap.
Can we send them back to get the twenty-three thousand dollar Ford edges?
So.
Alderman McCall?
So I guess the question may be in part is, so if the authorization was for the twenty-three, which is in the ballpark, which I thought was low at the time, but it jumps to thirty-seven, when do we get notified that there's such a significant gap there?
I don't recall it being twenty-three, to be honest with you. I don't know.
I remember it being presented to the council in twenty-three, yeah. I thought that sounded low for an edge, which is why I said take it.
That's what the conversation was, that it was so low, is that it was stated that it was on state contract bid, and we should take advantage of it because it was so low.
I think that, is that imminent? Because I remember stating that, right? Like, if that's what it is, we should get it. Or somebody had made that statement at the time.
I think it was you. But that's a seventy thousand dollar difference there, so that's significant.
Yeah, oh, that's significant.
Yeah, it is very significant.
Can we follow up and get some answers on that?
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's significant. That's a valid point. We still have to come up with the cost of all the other vehicles. So do you have any proposals?
I don't handle that, so I guess I'll think of the bonds. Some of those are going to be charged to the different sewer and water, but there is a remaining amount.
Do we have any proposals of how to finance those?
Well, I guess what we could do is let us go back and on the first of the edges, see what we can do there. And let us come back with a proposal. What is going to be taken out of, what is, would be, would be of each fund, on civil water or general fund, and a recommendation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that sounds like a game plan, a good game plan. You know, we've got, obviously, a variety of options. How many of those vehicles can be used under the sewer department, under the water department? How many of them are related to the general fund? You know, obviously, we want to try to preserve the general fund as much as we possibly can. We can take a look at bonds lens, but those rates aren't doing us any good these days. So, so, you know, I'm a bit cautious there.
Actually, John said one would go to water filtration, two to water distribution, and two to codes enforcement. Is that the edges?
Are those the edges?
Yeah, the trucks. The edges.
So two go to water? I'm sorry, Jay.
One would go to water filtration, two to water distribution, and two to code enforcement. Correct, Brad?
That's right. Yeah, we want those in two general fund.
Right, so two, then under code would go to the general fund. But three of those edges would go to water, it sounds like the water department.
Water fund.
Yes, water fund. And then of the dump trucks. Any idea, Director Thompson, when the other three trucks would be coming in?
No idea.
Okay. So that's just like, they just come off of the wagon? Here it is.
Get an email, it's on the way.
Okay. Okay. Because if we're talking, I mean, will they be the same price? The price?
Oh, the prices locked in.
The prices are locked in. So we should, the price you gave us of four forty-nine, was that for five or all eight dump trucks?
That was all eight.
Okay, all right. That's, I thought it was only for five. So, okay, so we know how much we need to come up with. Possibly, could we say next week, next Tuesday, we get a proposal on how, what you guys think we should finance them or how to fund them? We'll get there.
We'll do it, yeah.
And get some answers for us on the edges. That'd be great. Alderman Robinson?
Is it possible to give a list of where these eight dump trucks are supposed to go? The five that are, or the three that are here? You said three out of the five are here, right?
No, five of the eight.
Five of the eight, okay. The other ones?
And do we have a breakdown, I would imagine, on where, do you have them handy or not? Where the eight trucks are?
I don't tell you where they're going. I don't know which of the three are here, but...
Out of the eight?
Out of the eight, what we've got, an F-550 going to streets, an F-250 going to parks, another one...
Can you slow it a little bit? F-250 going to where?
To parks. Another F-250 going to parks. A 250 going to the mechanic shop. And then we have an F-250 going to the filter plant, two of them to sewer maintenance, I mean, to the sewer plant, and one to sewer maintenance.
Three to sewer, one to water, four to general.
As far as the individual vehicle numbers, we can check those for you, but I don't know if that matters.
Oh, that's fine. I think just what they are, where they're going. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that sounds like four are going to the, would be under the general, one to water, and three to sewer. That's about right. So. Any other questions? Okay, we can follow up on this next Tuesday, since we're back, since we're off summer holidays. Because Alderman Anastasia has requested, he's back weekly because he's retired. So, number two, discussion item ordering vehicles. Three Ford Transits, three Ford F-150s. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like Robert to talk about this.
So on our vehicle replacement plan, this is the next step. The Transits, there's three, there's three F-150s. The window for the Transit opened this afternoon, and they don't have everything loaded yet, so they don't know the cost. And Thursday is when they want for the Transit to kind of open. So until we get those numbers from them, we don't know what it's going to cost. The problem is, if we go ahead and delay, that window could be closed in a matter of days, depending on how quickly they fill up. So we're trying to stop. Pay indication, what they're going to be, maybe we could go off, just give you some rough idea tonight. When we ordered those trucks about a year ago, the F-250s, you know, it was about fifty grand. These are 150s, but it's been a year. I don't know if it's, let's say roughly fifty, it's hard to say. And the Transits, I don't know what they're going to come in at.
I mean, that, and I'm not saying that's on you, Director Thompson, but the state doesn't give us any heads up, like, I mean, that's...
No, we've been calling.
What, what these things are priced at?
We won't know until it's uploaded into the system. And Parks McCallin for weeks trying to, is it ready? Is it open? They say not yet. So they got it open. I don't know why they opened it without having anything fully in there. That doesn't make sense to me. But as he footed.
It's a bad plan, right?
He says, I don't have it all, all the specs uploaded into the system yet.
Okay.
Other Transits?
Paints, white paints.
Like that being an answer and check.
And then we, I don't know, forty, forty-five.
Questions? Comments? Alderman Robinson?
I have two. The first one, has the city looked at consolidating vehicles by chance?
Yes, and that's what we've done with these last couple orders.
Okay.
We gave up two in water to replace with one that was more useful. So we're doing that in a few spots.
Okay.
And some of the older vehicles that were taken out, we're using, normally they would go to auction, but we've got worse vehicles, so we're going to use those to replace them and send the really bad ones out. So we're trying to make do with what we have.
Okay.
And then the other question was the fact that we have the 250s. So the 250s are there. I'm going to just eliminate the 550 because that's something different. But the 250s, they're there to do a job that the 150s could not. So, because I know that, I mean, pulling wise.
Yeah, some of these will, we have trailers to pull and such, so they're, they're ordered based on what they're used for out of the field.
So left-hand term, maybe?
Yes, we may be pulling a compressor or a trailer or something like those.
Do you know by chance where these vehicles are going to, or that's, you don't know yet?
Hmm, I don't believe I have that here, to be honest with you. No, I don't think I do. It would be speculation right now I could get with Mark here tomorrow, kind of exact where it wants him, but we've changed it a little bit here. So this is not going to necessarily be more accurate, but we had one going to, one was going to engineering, but we're not going to do that now. We're going to swap out one of these, we're taking them to service, dump the engineering one. And we had two going to water distribution, but I don't, this is dated, so I don't want to, I'd rather be more accurate information. We made some switches in the last few days.
Just, Director Thompson, I might make a recommendation, since you're going to follow up with this for Alderman Robinson's question. It would be helpful, of the six vehicles that you're looking to acquire, could you please provide us with what vehicles are being replaced? The year, the mileage, et cetera?
Sure.
That would, that would be helpful. Just to give the alderman an idea of, you know, I know some of the vehicles we have are, they're beat up, they're old, they've got, they've served their life. But at the same time, you know, in the back of my mind, we're seeing an unexpected increase of seventy thousand dollars on the trucks that are here, that we're committed to, that we've got... That would be helpful, just to give the Alderman an idea of, you know. I know some of the vehicles we have are, they're beat up, they're old, they've got, they've served their life. But, at the same time, you know, in the back of my mind, we're seeing an unexpected increase of seventy thousand dollars on the trucks that are here, that we're committed to, that we've got to come up with the funding for, versus ordering vehicles that we have not committed to yet. And I think we got to do this quickly, because you said purchasing opens on Thursday? Is that right?
For the F-150s, Transits, theoretically, it was today, we didn't have them loaded, so they'll start tomorrow morning.
So, the soonest you can get us some communication, the council can give us some verbal authorization, is that right? Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes.
But I, but I think we all would like to know what the numbers are, if possible.
I know. I agree.
And what the vehicles that are being replaced look like, and.
Yeah, I can tell you, there's one that's swatted, we did, like I said, make some changes in the last few days, but I can do that revise.
Is there anything else that you guys would like to?
I was just going to tell you, you asked about the mileage, but in fairness, some of them is not going to be high mileage, you've got to look at engine hours, some of these trucks will start and run.
Okay. Is that accessible? Or no?
Probably is, but I mean, I was saying, sometimes when you get, like, it's a newer model, and you might think, but that engine might just start in the morning and not stop.
Yeah, I don't know about.
Well, then, maybe.
Body parts and power meters, I just don't know.
Yeah, okay.
And they could be low mileage, it could be over, and repair parts up through the roof right now. We're getting killed by a lot of these repairs.
Any other questions, comments? What I would encourage you, between today and tomorrow, that if you have any questions or comments, again, I I don't want to use a bad pun and say, you know, I'm hesitant about pumping the brakes on, you know, vehicle purchases when we don't know what the prices are. It just doesn't seem super, anyways, responsible. So, if we can get some more information on that, and then we can communicate through email on this, that would be a great. Okay, thank you, Director Thompson. How about PL seventy-seven dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio to designate Robert Thompson, the Director of Public Works, as the responsible local official for the Department of Transportation's Equitable Business Opportunities Web-based Civilian Rights Reporting System? Mr. Mayor?
We discovered that in the past, Director Ibran is still listed with the state as this person, so we were just, we need a resolution authorized that be changed to Robert Thompson.
Okay, comments, questions? Alderman Robinson?
How often is this actually utilized? I mean, I don't know what it is, so.
During grant, reimbursement requests, that sort of thing. We have to certify expenditures, and how many, how much of our goals we've met, or minority women-owned businesses, that sort of thing. So, I have to certify whenever we do reimbursement request, not often.
But this is mandated by the state?
Yes.
And then it doesn't get interpreted?
Similar stuff, yes, you're right, but this is for, this is for DOT, Department of Transportation. Kerry takes care of the board, Department of State, Empire State Development, and all that stuff there, so.
All right, comments, questions, anything else? All right, all in our favor? I'll make a motion, could I get a second? Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? I oppose, motion Kerry, it's referred to tonight's regular meeting. PL seventy-eight dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with McMahon and Man Consulting Engineering and Geology, can you see for the design and construction observation services for the replacement of a collapsed sewer pipe located below the flood control levee in the city of Oleane to authorize the transfer of seventy-two thousand eight hundred fifty from the sewer fund contingency to the newly created capital fund two-three-two, North Oleane Sewer Reconstruction, for the costs associated with the said agreement? Mr. Mayor?
We're going to have Brad Hayers to talk about this.
Good, Brad?
Yeah, so if you, if you remember, the first time we advertised for this work, we got no interest. We re-advertised, we got four firms that submitted a proposal for this work. Robert and I went through the proposals, scored them, put those scores together and ranked them. We then sent the, all the proposals to the DEC, seeing how this is really their, this is really their project, essentially. This is their structure. And so, we sent it to them, they did the same thing, we held a conference, and, you know, they didn't really want to endorse anybody who could go out, you know, not saying the name of, Robert and I came out and said, well, this is how we ranked them, and they went as far as saying, we agree with that, with that ranking. So, this firm is who we placed at the top, this is who they placed at the top. We feel they're more than qualified to do the work in a timely fashion. And so, really, what we're here seeking is approval to spend this money and lock down this firm to start this process of replacing the sewer line and restoring the levee to its original condition, because now it's part of it, it's sunk in on the riverside.
Okay, a couple of follow-up questions for you, Brad. So, the way it sounds was that they would not the lowest bidder? Not that it's required by our.
Yeah, I don't believe they would be lowest bidder.
Can we, do we have an identity, just out of curiosity, what's the differential on the lowest bidder versus this?
Well, it wasn't that cut and dry, because some of them didn't have construction services, so they really couldn't.
It wasn't at the status?
No, if you add that in, they probably were.
Okay, so this is, would be for the full construction?
This is start to finish?
Inspection service, yes?
Yep, start to finish. They were going to certify the levee per the Army Corps standards, FEMA standards. This is really all encompassing, which the other ones were not, they were basically, they get, they get in the door, and then it's, well, if you need this, we'll do this, if you need that, we'll do that. This is, this has everything that we need, all in one. This, you know, the seventy-two thousand eight hundred fifty is for everything.
And it's full-on site inspection every day?
Correct, yeah.
Another follow-up question, and maybe this is more of a legal question, Mayor, and if it is, jump in, but have we established who owns the levee yet?
That has been asked several times, the state is still looking into it. We do have documentation with states that they do own it, and, you know, maintain it.
Mr. Mayor, anything beyond that?
No, we're still going back and forth with the state on this, so I guess you could say the ball's in their court now to prove to us that they don't own it. And they're working on that, but there are archives for documentation, so.
Alderman Robinson?
Well, on the same topic, so if, if we can prove that the state owns it, or, is DEC or is it the state?
DEC.
DEC, okay, so, same thing, okay. So, are we going to go after them for the seventy-two thousand eight hundred fifty, if we would pay for this, and then, okay?
Yes, yes.
Plus, plus tax, interest, and the whole nine yards, since that's what they do to us.
I just want to make sure, just when I'm hearing this right, too, I think, now, Brad, this is only for the engineering service, not the actual repairs.
Correct, so we, this is the engineering, plan, and inspection throughout construction, this is not construction.
So, I just make that clear.
Yeah, thank you.
But it's for inspection while the construction's going on? They're onsite daily, watching, and making sure everything's in done appropriately?
And that service, and this quote, is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for that, which wasn't included in our others, in the other ones.
Time frame for us to know the, ultimately, the damage? So, they're going to first go in and come up with an estimate cost, right? And then we're going to have to go out to bid to actually do the repair work, the construction itself, is that correct?
Correct, and this, this company puts that bid spec.
Estimate that bid spec.
Yeah, the estimate, and then the spec for the contract that they bid on. They help us out quite a bit with all that stuff.
Anything else, from anybody?
Nothing. So, yeah, just from a funding aspect, I know in the PL, I believe it says, to come out of the sewer contingency fund, I don't know if that's the best idea to pull off, because there's seventy-five thousand in there, and that's what we would use for any short calls in the budget. It may be better to come out of the fund balance, to not deplete that account, you know, completely, because there's seventy-five thousand, that's one for seventy-two eighty. I just don't know if that's the best use of those funds.
What's in the general fund balance now?
Sorry?
Sorry, Tom?
No, and the general fund balance.
No, this would come out of sewer fund, the sewer fund is one point seven million dollars.
You said sewer funding, wasn't it?
I thought you said sewer funding also.
What's happening behind? Sewer fund contingency. So, like, if we have a short, a shortfall in one of the line items for this, this will be your budget, we would, we would then come to you and say, hey, can we move, how are we?
I used to basically say something.
I just hate to wipe that out, basically, in its entirety.
No, I mean, there's a lot, there's times where we have to touch that multiple times throughout the, throughout the year.
Right.
For, you know, five thousand here, ten thousand there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a large, one-time repair, or not repair, but service.
Right, I just, I just, like, require.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with that. Lights?
Maybe we have one point seven right now in. Yeah, we have one point seven million dollars in the fund balance for sewer fund. That was going to close the year at five thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, but I do not have the adjustment just yet from BWB, so that may change. It may not be much, but.
Do we have, and I know the adjustment, I know they come in and do their adjustment thing, do we have any feeling whether we're adding to that or not, by this point, or no?
No, this one, no.
My opinion, as a six and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to come to, we have to come to the council, if we, we need, we run short of contingency, we have to come here anyways to get it, so it can come from the sewer fund balance then, or you can, you know, change the resolution to take it out now. And if we don't use a contingency, that goes back into the fund balance. Either way, we have to come to the council.
Yeah, that's it. I would just let it sit.
So, rather just change it to come out of the sewer fund balance?
Okay, so anywhere, anywhere it says sewer fund contingency will have to be changed to sewer fund balance. Okay. When we get to resolutions, when we get to the regular meeting, we can make that adjustment, okay? So, that, that makes sense to me. We can go ahead and remove that, move that from sort of the contingency line to the, from the general fund, from the sewer fund, sorry. Can I get a motion on this? Motion is made by Alderman McCall, second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor? I oppose, motion Kerry, it's referred to tonight's regular meeting. Make a motion to adjourn, but I get a second. Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? I oppose, motion Kerry to adjourn from our committee as a whole. Okay, I call the order to the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the attendant pool?
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Alderman Panis? Alderman Forney?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
Dustin Crawford?
Here. Please rise for the invocation of the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
What the witness, the flag, in the United States of America? And to your beloved, for those who stand in one nation, and for God.
Reading, correction, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council was held on Tuesday, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, at six forty-five p.m. Present were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Panis, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. Hamson was Alderman Forney.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting, can I get a second?
Sure.
Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? I oppose, motion Kerry. Committee reports on unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from Mayor?
I have two proclamations that the court will read.
Special proclamation for National Assisted Living Week, whereas residents of assisted living communities are active members of the larger community, offering their knowledge, life experiences, and involvement, whereas assisted living fosters choice, dignity, and independence, and assisted living communities are committed to excellence, innovation, and advancement of person-centered care. Whereas this year's theme of National Assisted Living Week is Season of Reflection, and it highlights the incredible care provided by essential caregivers and the special bonds created in assisted living facilities across the country. Therefore, I, William J. Alio, Mayor of the City of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim the week of September tenth to the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Assisted Living Week in the City of Oleane. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to visit Oleane's assisted living facilities and spend time with the residents and staff to show support and appreciation. In testimony thereof, I appear unto, set my hand, and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Oleane the twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty-three. For the City of Oleane, New York, signed, William J. Alio, Mayor.
Just a second, I have the opportunity today to visit Keaton Heights, and spend time with some of the residents down there, and they were very thankful. Myself, somebody, someone in Joe Zidio, and Senator Borello were there. We recruited us to cookies and brownies, and so that was, and I used to live down there. So, okay, thank you.
Special proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas September has been proclaimed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and is signified by the color of gold, whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of fourteen, and each day, forty-two children in the United States are diagnosed with a form of cancer. Whereas treatment for childhood cancer is difficult, can last for years, and survivors may have significant treatment-related health issues. Whereas key to pediatric cancer survival is early detection, as is the courage of children fighting cancer, the strength of their families, and the dedication of healthcare professionals. Therefore, in recognition that public awareness will help support families and help advocate for additional research into causes and treatments of childhood cancers, I, William J. Mayor, William J. Alio, Mayor of the City of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim September as National Childhood Awareness Month in the City of Oleane. In testimony thereof, I appear unto, set my hand, and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Oleane the twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty-three. For the City of Oleane, New York, William J. Alio, Mayor.
And we, I thought it was Janet Mosier?
Here.
Okay, I don't see, I don't see Janet, so I will get this proclamation to, Janet is a very staunch advocate of preventing child, childhood cancer, so.
Okay, awesome, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
Monthly report of the city auditor, month ended August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Financial summary report of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Proposals, legislation, and referrals?
PL number seventy-six dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, for resolution by council president. PL number seventy-seven dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, by council president. PL number seventy-eight dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio, referred to the, to committee of the whole Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. referred to the, to Committee of the Whole Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three by council president. P L number seventy-nine dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three for resolution by council president. P L number eighty dash twenty-three by Mayor Alio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-sixth for resolution by council president. P L number eighty-one dash twenty-three by Councilman Alderman Anastasia, referred to Public Safety Committee by council president. P L number eighty-two dash twenty-three by Alderman Benyon, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three for resolution by council president.
Okay. Um, so, uh, next up would be public comment, but before a public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the Alderman make a statement at this time. Alderman Robinson?
I was just questioning in my head, are we going to get, uh, P L eighty dash twenty-three, we're gonna get to see that written before we vote that day?
Can we, uh, Mr. Mayor, can we receive a, uh, a draft of eighty dash twenty, eighty dash twenty-three?
Yes.
Uh, have a time?
Yes, uh, you had asked for some information, uh, is that related to?
We received it.
Okay.
Yes, it has to go out to the tax trail tomorrow to be published, so I can help you on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we were waiting for any comments or suggestions. Okay, so.
Okay, anything, anything else? Alderman McCall?
So I just wanted to, um, thank the mayor and Chief Richardson and the police department for their swift action on North Second Street and some of the issues that the, um, they had noted there, so thank you for that. And also today I sent an issue out on, about parking on North Third, and, uh, the chief was right on it, so those are, those were big safety issues in workforce, so I just wanted to tell you how much not just I, but the, um, uh, residents truly appreciate, um, the swift work and, and the diligence that went into making their neighborhood safer.
Ole Miss, Chief Richardson.
Okay, uh, I will, uh, I'll actually make a statement, um, and, and ask, um, i- if we have to establish a policy on, on the city Facebook pages, maybe that's the route to, to take a look at. Uh, but I'm gonna pass along, again, this concern has been brought up a couple different times, um, in the past in regards to city managed Facebook pages. Um, and, uh, the, what I'm, what I've noticed, uh, I had a couple residents actually who reached out to me and, um, noticed that the comments were turned off on city managed pages, um, where things are being posted uh, about street, uh, paving and, 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 uh, street, you know, updates and improvements or stop signs going in, um, on one Facebook, uh, one city managed Facebook group. Uh, but something that I, I think continues to be a bad look, uh, is allowing comments on people's arrest profiles. I have, uh, one hundred percent support for our police department. As Sonia said, they did a bang-up job, uh, you know, they, they, a hundred percent. And I have no qualms about people that say, thank you, O P D, uh, you know, for, for protecting our community and things of that nature. But the social media, public opinion, the, the, the hurtful and harmful and just degrading comments about people's appearances that get arrested, um, many people who, you know, may or may not have addiction, mental illness, and all of the above. I don't think that's a good look for the city, to be perfectly honest. If we're setting an example and we're turning off comments because we don't want negative feedback in some areas, then we obviously have the ability to do that in other areas too. And I just, that's been something that we've brought up in the past, and, you know, I think we can lead by example. Um, and I don't think you can have it over this, so that's just my two cents. Uh, okay, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the public comment statement?
Public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And again, just, just as a clarification, it's not something that we are doing as a, as a staff, all right? What we're posting, it's, it's what, you know, I think we need to manage what the, the public posts on and some of that stuff, so I just wanted to make sure I made that clear. Um, okay, uh, I'll invite any members of the public to please, please approach the state, uh, podium, uh, state your name and address for the record, and we'll have five minutes.
Okay, there, okay. Um, my name's Jessica Davis. I live at nineteen hundred Johnson Street, or Johnson Road, actually the last hospital in the city. Um, now there's a, whether it's street or, anyways, it's nineteen hundred Johnson, um, sh- street. Uh, I just started talking.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a timer, so I can keep myself to that five minutes. Um, my name is Jessica Davis. I moved to the City of Ole Miss in the fall of nineteen ninety-four. Um, I've come to address you all today. Uh, bear with me, I have multiple sclerosis, so I do have some problems with, like, stuttering and whatever. Um, I also don't like public speaking and I'm very nervous, so. Um, but I've come to address you all, uh, a situation that I feel very passionate about, and to be honest, I'm actually quite angry about. So I come on behalf of the LGBTQIA community as an ally, but as, um, of two children who belong in that community. And on August twenty-sixth of this year, that community celebrated their pride event called Queer All Year Pride. At this event, the city denied the right to open the, the bathrooms up at the park. The event was paid for and organized by C C P C. The president's here, he'll talk more about that, but they were told that the bathrooms would be open. On the day of the event, there was no bathrooms. They thought it was an error made on, oh, they reached out to the city. They said since the pool had closed early that there would be no bathroom access without an additional fee. Again, the C C P C said they would pay that fee that day as soon as an official came and got them. They would write them a check or cut them, or pay them out cash. Um, and the bathrooms were, in the long run, not open for that event. I come not as just an ally to the community, but as a citizen of Ole Miss and as a disabled citizen of Ole Miss. Um, the bathrooms should have been opened. There were several people there that were, that were wheelchair bound, walking with canes, walking with walkers. Um, I have one of my son's friends who is also part of the community. I had taken him there. They had to go across the street to Country Fair, and they had to be carried back by their fiancee. Um, also, you, so anybody who attended this event, elderly, disabled children, had to cross that busy intersection to go to Country Fair. Which Country Fair does not like them using the bathrooms. That's, the parks should have been open. So I hate this, but they were decent enough to not turn us away. Thank heavens, but we still had to get there and get back to the park safely. I believe from now on that if any park in the city is running out for any reason at any time of the year, that bathrooms needed to be included across the board, full stop. This should never have happened, and I do find it ridiculous, and I do find myself as a disabled person that, yeah, violated the Americans with Disabilities Act at the very least, if not the queer community. And I say shame on whoever made that call, and Mr. Alio, I think you said you were taking this up, so I'm gonna put it on your shoulders. Uh, you guys allow people to preach hate from the public in this community, particularly against the queer community, and you say that's their First Amendment right. You have children who are being demonized in the public school by board members and teachers and aides, who are, they're being told they're demonized and they're going to hell, and then you wonder why young people are leaving. I know, because when I first came here, there's about twenty thousand or more down, under, between thirteen, about four, thirteen, five, under, thirteen thousand five hundred. So now I'm gonna address you, Mr. Alio. I came here as a, I came to Ole Miss as a criminal justice major under J C C, and I had to do an internship, and a part of that was through the Ole Miss Police Department. And you, Mr. Mayor, were the juvenile officer at the time, and I had to do part of my internship under you and your advisement. I thought you to be serious and strict, but always fair, not cold, calloused, or indifferent. But here are three decades, I stand before you, and I do see you as such. You are the citizens to all of the citizens of Ole Miss, not just the ones who vote for you, not just the ones who agree with you. It's all or none. That's your job. That's your job. All, all of you guys, you serve the public. You're office holders, you're public servants. That's your job. Last year, Mr. Mayor, you told the, I live as a C C P C committee, when they presented you with the pride flag, um, that you couldn't put it up because they haven't been on Flag Day, and that would be, in your words, disrespectful to veterans. I would like to make two, just three statements. One, there are LGBTQIA veterans who proudly serve their country, even though their country asks them to not tell, don't ask, don't tell, but they serve, still serve their country gravely. And just as today, there are active members who still sit in the queer community, who still took an oath to defend the Constitution. And part of that First Amendment right also states the queer community gets to have freedom of self-expression, and that flag should have been put up when you said it was going to, when we were all here on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And when you guys put it up, you put it on upside down, which means that that community is under attack or in distress, and that happens every single day in this city to queer kids, to queer adults. You all, the city council, voted for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. I think that was by unanimous consent. And I'm over because I rambled a little bit. I just wanted to say that from now on, I think that you guys need to, I want you guys to, to reinstate the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee because obviously it's needed. Because fights like this go to the community all the time. Hate crimes are not reported or done anything about hate crimes. Um, and so when I asked, why is, why do we need the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Act Committee? Because we can't go to the bathroom in, in city parks. Whoever made that call, I don't know who it was, they were gonna cut you a check. All you gotta do is come up with those bathrooms. But me as a disabled person, how am I supposed to look at my children and be like, yeah, your city cares about you, because they know. Anyways, so I'm asking you all just to do your jobs, do better, be better. You need to not, like, worry about, like, how the, the streets and the signs and the fancy lights look, but, but how you treat all your citizens. Because also in the Fourteenth Amendment, it has equal protection under the law, and I know I'm over my time and I apologize, but I'm just asking you. I'm the only one speaking out for the queer community. I would have had all speak out as the president, I'm here, I'm Catholic, my children. All right, I, I just ask that you guys do better next time, and that, that, that bathroom thing stands. Parks running out, bathroom things included, this doesn't happen again. Because I didn't walk across the ba, to go to the bathroom. I held it in.
Thanks.
So I now will make myself back.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else?
My name is Nova Meck. I live at three two one South Berry Street. I was one of the volunteers at the Pride event. I am also disabled. And when I first came there, we were told that the bathrooms were going to be open, but they weren't open yet. I was honestly very concerned in hearing this because not only am I disabled, I have to use a cane to walk. It is difficult for me to walk long distances. I'm also partly blind. I'm actually in a great deal of pain right now because my blindness takes the form of extreme photosensitivity. I have to wear very strong sunglasses with specialty eye shields, and I have to wear a hat to shade myself from the lights. And currently, the lights are coming down, and that's why I have my hand up here. It hurts a great deal. When we got there and we found out that the bathrooms were closed, I was also concerned because one of the medications I take makes me have to go to the restroom more frequently than most people and oftenly, often more urgently. If I don't go and I have to hold it, it feels like someone is punching me in the sternum. And then it feels like they're punching me in the diaphragm and then my pulvis. It feels like a giant bruise, and it will last for hours even after I manage to go to the bathroom. I held it as long as I could, and then I was also one of the people who had to go to, across the road to the Country Fair. When I got there, I discovered that there was no crossing signal for pedestrians. That makes it extremely difficult for me to cross the street, especially in the afternoon, which is when this took place, because there's so much light, I cannot see properly during those times. I couldn't go back and get help because I had to go, so I did my best. I believe I crossed the street at the correct time, but I can't say for certain because I could not see. I trusted that the bathrooms were going to be open. When I came back, there were two other children, two children who came out at the same time and were headed toward the park. And they looked to be checking both ways to see when it was time to cross the street. So I trusted them to cross at the correct time. I don't believe they did. I stepped out into the road when they did, and instead of walking like normal people do, they swirled and ran. I was already in the road and committed at that point to getting across because I was partway through the intersection. And I ended up in front of a truck which honked at me with its giant horn and nearly knocked me over from the noise. And I have to also, because I'm partly blind, use sound to be able to navigate. That meant that I was disoriented, nearly fell in the road because of this, in pain because I'd been waiting for so long and having to cross the road on my own. It is unreasonable to expect that many people to be in one place and not have to use the restroom. And I had to cross again later to go, but I couldn't risk it again. So I ended up waiting for hours like that. When I finally got across the road and went to the bathroom, I was in so much pain, I nearly vomited, and I had to walk home in that state because I can't drive. The decision to not open the bathrooms affects some of the most vulnerable of the community. Please keep in mind that we are not strange other people. We are just people. We have lives like everyone else. We take care of our families. We take care of the community when we can. And sometimes the community needs to take a little bit of care of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, for the record, because I think you all know me by now. Uh, Pabst Genus, three oh nine North Fifth Street, and as of shortly before, uh, the Pride celebration this year, I am the new president of Cumberland County. Fifty years in New Jersey, I will do that to you. I am the president of the Cataragius County Pride Coalition, but I am emphasizing here that tonight I am speaking in my own capacity. I do want to thank Mayor Alio for his response to the situation. There seems to be some consensus, from what I've been told, about modifying the policy to ensure that bathrooms are included in all rental contracts of city facilities that provide them. However, despite the stories that we've already heard tonight and the stories that I was inundated with during and after Pride, this is not about bathrooms. This is an overriding issue. The bathrooms are a symptom of a larger disease, and that is the general callous disregard of some people throughout this city and its government over the years toward the LGBT community and an outright hostility. We can't get the police to investigate hate crimes against us. We have no voice in this city, despite good allies like Alderman McCall, Alderman Robinson, and you, President Crawford. We still have no direct voice in this city. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that you have taken responsibility for what happened with the bathrooms, but I don't want you to take responsibility because that was not your decision. You are not the one who decided to close the bathrooms. And I find it suspicious that the date selected for closing the pool, and thus the bathrooms, was the middle of a week, three days before our event, when we were the only event still scheduled during pool season. So we would be the only group affected. So we would be the only group affected. I would like to see an investigation into how that decision was made, who made that decision, and see who decided on the ever-so-convenient timing. I also think that we must call for the reinstatement of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee within this city, because again, this proves we have a fair chunk of this city who has no direct voice, and it's only through committees and organizations like that that we have any direct way to redress wrongs done against us within and by this city. I'm also calling on the council to make sure that the Civilian Police Review Committee is finally staffed and put in place, and I also ask that a member of the LGBT community be put on that committee. Because again, like I said, we have a long history in this city, continuing to this day, of disregard for our rights and refusal to address hate crimes against LGBT, including a video we have of a City of Ollyam police officer telling an LGBT person who was being verbally harassed, yes, I should arrest him, but I'm not going to. That is how blatant it is. So, I thank you for dealing with the bathroom situation so that people like those who came here tonight do not have to go through that again, but if we keep putting Band-Aids on a gaping wound, the infection is just going to get worse. Please, let's address the underlying problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm gonna leave these here for you guys to have, or I just want you guys to have a copy, and also submit for the record. And for the first portion, so most of you know who I am. My name is Kevin Doherty, I live at six fifteen West Sullivan Street, here in the great city of Ollyam, New York. I come in front of this board tonight not as a city employee, but as a private resident and a taxpayer. These views are, these views and opinions are my own and do not represent that of my employer, now that I've gotten that out of the way, less of the formality. I know all of you have children, and I know all of you have children, and all of you work hard to make this city a great place for all of us to live and thrive. I do my part while I, I do my part, and while I do not at times agree with some of the actions of this council, I try to keep an open mind and understand that we're all on the same team. My issue tonight is the lack of accountability of appointed members of this team. When I served on this, when I served on this council, we had a city attorney who's required to be, who's required to have open door office of twenty hours here at the city building every week. We required him to show up to every council meeting, committee meeting. The total amount of required hours was typically thirty, if not more, hours per week. The city attorney went on to serve the city in a greater capacity. The salary at that time was sixty thousand dollars, and I know that we've had, there was many discussions about increasing it, but majority of the council ruled to diminish that. Let's see here. Upon the vacancy, he was replaced with the current city attorney, who has no set office hours, clearly does not put in thirty hours a week into that position, nor is required to show up at every council meeting or committee meeting, as his predecessor once did. As far as I'm aware, the salary is also twelve and a half thousand dollars more per year. I meticulously watch all of the council meetings so that I can stay up to date on the ongoings of my city. From what I can gather, most of the people in this room, and many people in front of me, also may agree with these opinions. Let me give you a recent example. There are drug addicts and squatters in a duplex next to my home. It started with domestic abuse, which I wish I could say is the worst offense. The squatters have had the police there multiple times to keep the noise down, telling their methadone clinic buses to stop spiking the horn at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning seven days a week. It is funny how there, it's funny how squatters can get electric turned on in their name, and then when it gets shut off, they cry for help. There is currently no electricity at that building, the utility company will not turn it on, and code enforcement has deemed the building unfit for human habitation. Two months, we have dealt with a generator running from seven AM to ten PM every night, when we could finally get the police department to force them to shut it off with threats of an appearance ticket for a noise ordinance violation. Code enforcement officials have had their house deemed unfit for human habitation on August twenty-first. When the place was deemed unfit for human habitation, typically based on the severity of the situation, the tenants are given a maximum of seventy-two hours to vacate. Code enforcement's hands are tied because the city attorney thinks that it is an illegal eviction. If their house was on fire, I don't think we'd be thinking the same thing. I think anyone who would have a question about making them leave, it is unsafe if squatters moved into a house with a red X on it, for fear they would fall through the floor, which is a cause for another house on South Second Street, because squatters kicked the door in, oh, I'm sorry. The owner abandoned the house, the city won't even allow the bank to shut the water off because the squatters kicked the door in and are now residing there. It has been deemed that that would be also an illegal eviction. This bleeding-heart nonsense has got to stop. The city is opening itself up to liability, allowing condemned houses to not be vacated. If the house is deemed unfit for human habitation, and the city does nothing to allow these people to be forcibly removed, they are opening themselves up to the liability by their own doing. If these squatters and drug addicts are injured in these homes because they do not have the power to, do not have power, and they stumble in the night and fall, or fall through floorboards, who takes the blame? If I were a squatter in that predicament, I would sue the city into oblivion, and I'm sure with a city-appointed, with a city-style appointed lawyer I could find at Walmart, I could write, I could win hands down. I don't know if you've looked at our parks lately, but you see squatters are migrating into our public facilities, which are supposed to be beautiful, and from the glistening of the hypodermic needles, that's what exists and shines nowadays. My almost-five-year-old could tell you what a hypodermic needle looks like because he's found multiple in our yard from the squatters littering them. They don't like kids biking in front of their house on the sidewalk, so they sprinkle them in the front yard as booby traps, but no one will do anything. I am the one who goes out there three times a day to pick up needles. While our city sits on its hands, I understand that New York State has zipped tied a lot of our municipal officials, but with whatever, whatever free appendages that are not zipped ties, we need to fight. This is ridiculous, this is our city, and we need to take it back. In not so much the actions of evil people that concerns me tonight, but it's the inaction of good people that is most concerning. I ask that the city attorney step up his game or follow the oath in which he was appointed or resign. I ask the common council to stand with us in solidarity as taxpayers and citizens of this great city. Thank you for listening to my play.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll call the common council. Uh, what, uh, not to take anything away that the mayor's working on, but this adding a PL to discuss when different people rent parks to include bathrooms, is that something that you guys are working on, or should we bring that forward?
I agree.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, um, findings and bills?
None.
Resolutions?
Resolution number seventy-five dash twenty-three, PL number seventy-six dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the transfer funds from general fund contingency to line item five one one zero point four one two.
All right, we talked about this in committee, we need some sponsors. Any questions? All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Motion is made by Alderman Benyon. I'll go ahead and second it. Okay, will the clerk please call the, a rule?
Alderman Benyon? Yes. Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and no names. Resolution number seventy-six dash twenty-three, PL number seventy-seven dash twenty-three. Audit committee by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Anastasia, to designate Robert Thompson, the Director of Public Works, as the responsible local official for the Department of Transportation's Equitable Business Opportunities Web-based Civil Rights Reporting System.
Okay, we just talked about that. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a rule?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and no names.
All right, Mr. Clerk, just one second, please. I'll make a motion to, to suspend the rules. To suspend the rules. Could I go second?
Second.
Second, and I, Alderman Corney, I'm sorry, she was just about to jump in there. All right, you gotta, you gotta, gotta go quick on this team, gotta go quick. All right, all the way, I oppose. All right, now I'll make a motion to amend resolution seventy-seven dash twenty-three. I think we're good if we just drop the word contingency, so then it just says from sewer fund, but then down in the, in the language there, I think that's, is that the sewer fund contingency account number? So just eliminate contingency and whatever G seven dash five, I think that's maybe an account number, is that?
Yeah.
So, 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 yep, so make that amendment there. Can I get a second on that?
Yes.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution number seventy-seven dash twenty-three, PL number seventy-eight dash twenty-three. Audit committee by Alderman McCall and seconded by Alderman Benyon, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with McMahon and Mann Consulting Engineering and Geology PC for design and construction observation services for the replacement of a collapsed sewer pipe located below the flood control levee in the city of Ollyam, and to authorize the transfer of seventy-two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from sewer fund
Yep, yep.
To newly created capital fund, number two three two, North Ollyam Sewer Reconstruction, for costs associated with said agreement.
Okay, we talked a great deal about this. Comments, questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a rule?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Corney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and no names.
Okay, just real quick, as we, as we adjourn tonight, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the victims of nine eleven. Hard to believe. It's one of those moments that literally feels like yesterday, and time flies. Our daughter came home with an assignment to interview people who were, you know, who lived through that, right, moment in time, and so she interviewed, you know, her mom and dad, and, you know, I went back and watched some videos of that on YouTube, and wow, just such horrendous violence and just terrible event. And anyways, I would like to make a motion to adjourn tonight in memory of the victims of nine eleven. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are-